Hello, I'm Carol Volin and I'm part of Elders for Sound Democracy. And I want to welcome you here today to our October community meeting. How many of you are here for the first time? Just raise your hands, maybe? Well, welcome. As our name implies, we are very concerned about preserving our democracy, which is currently under threat. We also have subgroups concerned with civic values, culture and education, political corruption, and state teams focused on getting out the vote. Please check us out to further explore and see where you might fit in. Go to the EAN, Elder's Action Network webpage and look for the ESD, Elders for Sound Democracy page. The song Coming to America by Neil Diamond was chosen to introduce our discussion today, to remind us that many of our ancestors made their way to the United States, often at great risk, to live in a country where democracy and freedom are treasured. And we remain a beacon of hope to many today. We need to continue to justify that hope. We know that democracy is not guaranteed, that each of us has an important part to play in making sure that everyone has an opportunity to vote and to make their voice heard. Before I turn the meeting over to Amy, I just want to acknowledge the tragic events of these last 12 days and perhaps what is yet to come. The loss of innocent lives on both sides is painful and leaves us feeling powerless. If we hope to be a party to the healing process, it is more important than ever that we remain a strong democracy. And with that, I turn the meeting over to Amy Fospring, who is a member of our board and a friend of our speaker David Pepper, and she will be introducing him. Amy?
Thank you, Carol. We are very fortunate to be joined today by David Pepper, lawyer, writer, political activist and adjunct professor, teaching election and voting rights law and the former chair of the Ohio Democratic Party. David is the author of five novels, political thrillers, which I highly recommend you do not start reading late in the day, as you will be up all night, as I was, unable to put any of the four books I have already read down. His newest book, The Fifth Vote, just came out, and one of our team members who has just finished reading it says it's another definite cliffhanger. He is also the author of two nonfiction books. In the first book, Laboratories of Autocracy: A Wake-Up Call From Behind the Lines, he clearly lays out what is happening behind the scenes to slowly but surely turn our democracy into an autocracy. His book Saving Democracy: A User's Manual for Every American redefines the basis for the viewpoints and policies supported by those who stand on either side of the political chasm that currently exists in the United States. He offers many effective actions that we can each take to nurture and save our democracy. David also has a Substack, very cleverly named Pep Perspectives, which provides regular brief videos on topics relevant to understanding our democracy and how to protect and support it. Thank you very much, David, for joining us today, and over to you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's good to be with you again. Man, I really want to hear who read my book. That's great. It's one thing to write nonfiction, that people read it, but when people read your novels, you really want to get that feedback. So thank you for whoever already got through it. And if they did finish it already, I'm very pleased you kept going. Never tell an author that, hey, I got your book, and then when they say, how's it going? They say, well, I'm not done yet. That's a really scary piece of feedback. So I'm glad you got through it, if you did. So I'm going to open up by talking about, sort of, and I know we have multiple things that are going on for the next hour and a half. But I want to just kind of give an update, and for some who haven't been on here before, it may be a little redundant, but I want to kind of just reframe, and I love your commitment to democracy, so this will be right up your alley, sort of reframe and frame how we, you know, to think about where we are right now in politics, and it goes way beyond what party we're in, I hope, for people. Let me find my, here it is. Can everyone see this presentation? Okay, I just was doing one, so I'm kind of well through it. That's why I was a little bit late. So to cut to the chase real quick, and this is going to sound a little bit edgy, but I think it's the best characterization of what's happening. There really, we often have thought about two sides of American democracy. We thought about two sides of American democracy, but we've sort of thought we've all been fighting the same battle all this time, haven't we? There's a red and a blue, or there breaks on partisan lines, and one party wins, the other loses, and gets itself back up again, and blah, and we go on and on as if we're all fighting the same battle. And we define it really as a partisan battle, and that's it. And I actually think that that, in hindsight, has been a really major cause of why we are struggling so much with democracy. Because it turns out it's not some clean battle between two parties each doing the same thing. And it goes beyond party. I don't want to be naive. I don't think, you know, I don't think it's not at all partisan, but but I do think there are certainly Republicans who will agree with most of what I'm going to talk about. There's certainly independents. I think that we are better off understanding that we are in a and two very different approaches to American politics that really are better seen as two different battles entirely. And once we see that more clearly, I think that we can see what we have to do about it in groups like yours that are making commitment to the battle for democracy. I think it becomes much more clear what we can all do about it than what we've been doing in the past, which, if you look around, is not working very well, given the state of democracy. So I want to get to this real quick, and I'll be very fast in this, because I know we have question everything else. I think the side on the left side of this slide has brought several assumptions. It's about her democracy that has shaped the entire battle. This side assumes, and this has been a flawed assumption, that democracy is intact. This side assumes that that its views are popular, which is correct. You know, this is the case. This is going to sound partisan, but it's just the facts. Most of the side, most, you know, pro-choice is a popular view, middle-class economics is a popular view, some kind of common sense gun reforms is a very popular view. Well, this side's bringing to its political battle a confidence that if it simply goes out and says what it says on fair elections, it's going to win. And that's largely what this side has been doing for a long time. So those are the two assumptions that lead to a political battle of trying to win elections on the fair playing field. And this side, because it's overconfident democracy, generally fights its battle for politics at the federal level. It's not worried as much about the state level for a variety of reasons. And so this side's political battle is largely, as we all can, I think, acknowledge, looking for 30 years of history, it's basically fighting to win office at swing states for federal office in even years. And when this side wins its battle, we all remember moments when the Obamas won '08 and Democrats won the Senate. This side celebrated like it won the whole battle, didn't it? Or when Biden won and Warnock won in '20, this side celebrated like it won its whole battle. And one reason it's celebrating that is because it's sort of assumed the other side was fighting the same battle, but that's actually not what's happening. There's a second battle being waged in American politics. And again, this is not partisan, because I think this is, if you could look at recent roads in Ohio, there were a lot of Republicans that still support a functioning democracy in different ways I'll talk about. The side on the right here, a strand of American politics is fighting a fundamentally different battle that we need to recognize more clearly than we have. They actually assume correctly that democracy can be subverted. They know that, and they know that because it is our history. That's how we got Jim Crow. They know that certain institutions can do certain things to make democracy less healthy or, you know, hardly there at all. They know that's happened in other countries like Orban and Hungary. They study it. This side also understands that their viewpoints are largely unpopular. And in a fair democracy, would actually not succeed. They would not be, they would not win. So this side actually understands that if it, if it, all it does is, if it does what the side on the left is doing, run on a fair democracy playing field, advocating its unpopular policies, this side understands it would lose. You know, this is not, this is not hidden either, by the way. You know, when Lindsey Graham told Mitch McConnell after Dobbs that he wanted to bring an abortion ban forward, Mitch McConnell didn't say, "Go for it." He said, "No, we don't want to lose." When Joe Biden, the State of the Union, was talking about social security cuts and what Republicans had written in plans, they shouted them down because they know that's not going to win an election for them. They'll lose an election if Rick Scott's plan is exposed in a fodder for campaigns. So this side actually understands that it wouldn't succeed if it, all it does is run elections on a fair playing field and a fair democracy. But sadly, at least some of this side has decided that rather than lose or rather than changing unpopular views, it's going to have a different battle on the side on the left. It's going to have a battle over democracy itself. And that battle turns out to be more specific. How do you subvert democracy enough to lock in a minority worldview that otherwise would lose in a fair democracy? That's their battle. And in case that sounds over the top, that the reason we're seeing years of this happening is because that's the battle they've been waging. And we haven't really wanted to see it, but we should see it. Once you see it, it actually is better. You're more able to feed it. Now, in case, you know, them studying Orban isn't enough of a giveaway, look at what happened in Ohio in issue one in August. It was a perfect symbol. And you're seeing this in other states too, by the way. What happened in August in issue one, and anyone who helped us here, I appreciate it so much. A lot of people around the country helped. That was a perfect symbol of their battle, isn't it? They understood and understand that Ohio is a pro-choice state, just like Kansas, just like Michigan. And rather than accept that fate, when people started gathering signatures to protect choice in Ohio, what did they do? They tried to change the rules midstream, subvert democracy by creating a threshold of 60% to change the Constitution in Ohio and not 50%. Meaning they win if only 41% agree with them. That is them subverting democracy to lock in a view they know would not succeed. Now, we beat it, and I'm glad we did. In a way, it almost, now that we beat it, it's helpful because it shows us, this is their, this is how they're thinking. How do you subvert democracy enough to lock in that view that would otherwise never win? Now, once we acknowledge and once we see that that's their battle, and this gets to the state emphasis I spent so much time talking about, they know they would not, they don't, you can't fight that battle at a federal statewide level. That's not a winning, that's not where you win it. As I have circled at the bottom of this graph here, to do their battle, it turns out the best place, the best institutions that can give them the victory they're looking for in their battle are states and state houses. And this is why, and some of you will have seen this before, states turn into, as I sort of quote Carville here, "It's a state house, stupid." States turn out to be the perfect place to accomplish that subversion of a democracy to lock in minority viewpoints, unpopular viewpoints. Why? States control every issue we all care about, far more than Congress. Look at Congress. Nothing ever happens in Congress. Things happen every day in states. Too often, no one sees it, but it does. And states control almost every issue we care about, don't they? Within these broader buckets on this slide is every major contested issue in politics, for the most part, except foreign policy. Woman's right to choose, what's taught in schools, how are guns regulated, or aren't they? All of that is controlled through states. And then, of course, we know that states also control democracy itself, again, far more directly than Congress. The rules of who votes and how they vote, when they vote, and how they register, how they, that's all states. That's far more than Congress. The rules of drawing district lines, which could either lead to a very representative government or rigged entirely, so there's no accountability, so that as I walk through on these slides here, so that blue states are represented by the other party, even when the voters have shown up to turn their states blue. Even in 18 in Wisconsin, where by nine points, Wisconsin voters chose a Democrat to be a state rep, that results into a supermajority Republican state house. So they figured out that state houses turn out to have this incredible power of democracy itself, where they can basically shift, use rules to change the makeup of the electorate, use rules to draw lines that not only warp representation, but also, as I put in this slide, lead to almost no competitive districts, which means no accountability. And they've actually, and this is more recent, as I put in the new book, Saving Democracy, it's gotten so bad in states as a response to having gerrymandering districts, gerrymandering to this degree, we now have a crisis where, I'll go through this real quick. This slide shows you you in many states have half or close to it of the districts not contested at all. Think about that. Fifty, you know, you all watched the Tennessee Republican state house and what it did a few months ago after that shooting at the school, kicking out two colleagues. 50% of the people who cast those votes against those colleagues didn't have an opponent prior November. The number in Oklahoma is 60%. Looking at Mississippi, 68%. Look at all these numbers. Georgia, a swing state, 53% uncontested. So what we've got in these states is literally, again, if your goal is to lock in a minority worldview without it being stopped, subvert democracy, having places like this where no one's even facing elections is perfect. And what happens once you have a system where people are facing no accountability? What happens? Well, all the incentives that we think should lead to good public service are flipped upside down. If you're in a district that's 50-50, you bet you better deliver good public outcomes or you won't get reelected because if your schools are falling apart, your wages are falling, your infrastructure is collapsing, you lose. But if you're in a system where 50% of you aren't even contested, you can deliver the worst in the other half or in runaway, non-competitive districts. You can have the worst results of all time. You're back in that office half the time without even doing, getting signatures and filing the filing fee. So you have this terrible problem in these states where you have truly terrible outcomes, but no one's held accountable for them because of the districts. You also have this incentive to be an extremist, don't you? Because all you worry about is the next primary. You don't worry about general election. You also have an incentive to always keep attacking democracy. Why? Because if you were an extremist with bad public outcomes in a fair district, you know you would lose. So you better avoid a fair district at all costs, which is why the gerrymandering continues over and over. The only thing that sustains the extremism in many of these states is the gerrymandering getting more intense as well. Because folks on this call or myself, if you were extremist with bad outcomes, we'd run against you in a fair district and we'd win. So what happens in these, and by the way, one other problem is state houses, no one knows anything about them. That adds even more lack of accountability. The only exception to that are certain private interests that know a lot about them. You know, utilities and for-profit schools and railroads that want weak regulations. Well, they get what they want, but the people back home not only don't know what they are, who's in these places, but also don't have any choice anyway. So go back to this slide. That makes these states the perfect place. If your goal is to lock in a minority worldview with no accountability for unpopular, I'm sorry, no accountability for unpopular positions, state houses are perfect. You don't worry. You want to win swing states, of course, for federal reasons, but you really want to win state houses because that's where most of your agenda can be passed. Win a state house wherever you can, not just swing states. They don't, they don't care if Biden won a state. They're going to go win that state. Win a state, gerrymander, suppress the vote of the other side, and then make the agenda go through. So I know we're going to need to take a couple of breaks. So one thing I'd say is, it's really important that we all understand that while there's a lot of partisanship in politics, once you remove the partisan lens and realize this is a battle for democracy itself, my hope is we start to see that there are many nonpartisan ways that we can lift democracy, and there are many ways we can work across party lines to fight for democracy. And I'm a big believer in this, and I'll stop at this, partly because I saw it happen in Ohio in August. People saw that what happened in August where they tried to change the threshold, amend the Constitution to 60%, people beyond Democrats saw that as a problem. And John Kasich and Chief Justice O'Connor, Betty Montgomery, and the Libertarian Party, and Democrats, all worked together, Bob Taft, all worked together to defeat that thing. And so one thing that helps, I think, groups like yours, I think, is when you can frame this as beyond party politics, there's all sorts of ways you could take part by registering voters and lifting voters, all nonpartisanship activity. But my hope is, except for the people who really don't want a democracy, the rest of us, like we did in Ohio in August, can gather together and say, we may disagree on a lot of things, but boy, do we not want to have a democracy undermined anymore here. So we're all going to campaign together to defeat it like we did in August? And guess what? It worked. We routed the thing. And so I'll stop with that because I know we have a number of things to talk about, but that's sort of the layout of what's happening. And just to put a point on it, the reason why we're seeing so many sort of insane things happening in states, extremism, gerrymandering, voter suppression, all at once, is because the model I've laid out is what's happening. It's all connected together. It's not, you know, you see inactivity at Congress, right? But we shouldn't let that inactivity make us feel good. I mean, it's terrible to see dysfunctional Congress, but there's rapid activity at the state house level. We have 50 cameras following inactivity in Congress. You know, they chased McCarthy and Jordan down the hallway with their microphones. We've all seen that. So we cover the inactivity, but the rapid activity that's undermining mainstream views and undermine democracy hardly gets any attention. And we have to start adjusting our sights to the fact that that's the frontline much more than Congress. And if we're going to save democracy, we've got to engage that frontline every bit as much as we do, if not more, than we do the federal stuff. So I'll stop talking there and go to questions, and I know you're going to have to break out sessions as well. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you so much. This is Torey S. Flaherty coming to you from right near Independence Hall in Philadelphia. And we're going to take about 10 minutes to entertain questions from our wonderfully large audience today. Let me just share that we will be making a video recording of this session available to everyone, and we will ask David if he'll allow us to also distribute a PDF of his slides to everyone who registered. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send them to you separately, too.
That'd be perfect. And in order to, because there are so many of us, let me ask you to raise your hand electronically, otherwise we're going to miss you. And the way to do that, if you don't already know, is to move your arrow along the toolbar at the bottom of your screen, and there's an icon labeled Reactions. If you look at that, you'll see a Raise Your Hand, and I should have just raised my hand, and now I'm going to lower it. So I'm going to ask you, as you think about what David's been saying and what you're confronting, I think more and more of us are beginning to confront what's happening in our states, David. Do we have some people who'd like to comment? We do. So it'll probably be unfair. It'll just be as I see that raised hands. I believe that technology is giving me order of raised. So William Southworth, would you unmute yourself, please? And we're going to take about another eight minutes to have general Q and A. We'll go back to David, and then we'll have some breakout sessions. So this won't be the only time you get a chance to talk, but David, I mean, William, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not a question. It's actually a statement of praise, having worked with all but two of the former Soviet Union countries after the Berlin Wall came down, and also doing a lot of conflict resolution in this country. You have done a wonderful job of defining the problem. So many people jump into solutions without laying out the problem. So well done.
Thank you. By the way, my background, William, I worked, my first job out of college was I worked for Brzezinski. It's big Brzezinski studying Ukraine, then I worked in Russia. And I will say, I didn't do the longer presentation here, but I actually think it's really helpful to sort of think through what we're dealing with as if it was another country. Because once you, once you remove our partisan lens and our, we're America, so we're infallible lens, you can see that if the things that I'm describing were happening in other country, we'd all see it more clearly. And I think one reason I'm hopefully able to see it is because I always had that sort of comparative perspective that you obviously have as well. I think we're blinded to a lot of what's happening because we are, we are sort of stuck so close to it. We're so overconfident in our democracy. We're so partisan. We're not seeing the red flags that we would see if they were happening somewhere else.
Yeah, Hungary is a good example of that.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you, William. You're nice to say that.
Thank you, John. John Daggett. Tell us where you're from as well.
I'm Portland, Oregon. I live in a state that, whose governor has the lowest rating of any governor in the United States. And she's a Democrat. And the Democrats have controlled Oregon for decades. And there is going to be a backlash that's going to be ugly. I would like, I don't know if you can talk about this, but it's a real problem that we haven't had that balance of good conservative and good progressive dialogue. It's been uber-liber, uber-liberal, or or it's going to be probably very conservative, and I'm concerned what's going to happen in Oregon because of this.
Yeah, you know, in my book, I go through, and I can't speak to, I actually had a friend who ran for, he ran in the primary. Do you know Tobias Reed? He's a friend of mine. He's actually, he ran in that primary against the governor. Yeah, I mean, government, I literally, the New York progressives read my book, and the first thought they have is, we got to fix New York because they have bad voting laws. And we, I mean, and I was in a Massachusetts thing, and they don't feel like they have any accountability. So the lack of accountability, while I focus on some of the things that are being happening in these red states, you have a highly gerrymandered system with no accountability, and you have problems, I don't care where it is. I think it's, I don't think it's both sides right now. I mean, I think in Congress, Democrats would end gerrymandering, Republicans are filibustering that. But I do think you're going to, if, to the extent you have locked up unaccountable government, you're going to have these problems. That's why I actually, I'm a big believer, and I think the risk is you do get this divide that frustrates everybody. And that's why I think that some of the things that could be done at the congressional level, if we have a chance to, you know, true gerrymandering reforms that bring accountability back into the system, primary reforms that take some of the extremism incentive out of primaries. And then, you know, there are different ways to have the runoff. You can have the ranked choice. Some states and communities have sort of a different model where you can vote for many candidates. Whoever gets the most vote wins. But I think reforms that bring accountability back to politics would obviously help solve some of the states that are veering to the far right that I'm worried about, but also might clean up systems that also may not have accountability to the problems you're mentioning. And there are reforms out there doing that. You know, the independent commission that Michigan has, it led to a map that I don't think anyone was thrilled with, but there were candidates in every district because it was uncertain who was going to win. Well, that leads to accountability. So I think we need to be pushing for these reforms that that will clean it up wherever it occurs. I can't speak to Oregon specifically, but of course, the same flaws will lead to the same screwed up incentives.
Okay, we have, I'm going to just suggest, David, that we listen to, that we have three more participants, and let's listen to what they have to say, and then you can come back to it.
Perfect. Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, no, no, it's okay. I just want to be sure that we get time to hear the next part of your presentation. So Michael, Ken, and Ellen, in that order, please make your talks brief, but let us know what's on your mind.
So Ellen Miller of the Sunshine Institute and the American Prospect described politics as a blood sport to make. And you think about people running at the local level, and I think a lot of people are reluctant to step into a free-for-all ring. And so I'm wondering if you have references to either social media sites or particular websites where people can learn how to be successful candidates at the local and state level and manage the calumny that they were likely to be subject to.
Okay, great question. I'm going to keep track of these, and we'll get it, answer it eventually, even if we don't ultimately get it done during our period today. Ken, what's on your mind?
Thanks. Well, I was going to mention that I've been on some panel discussions with a guy from Germany who is a historian and didn't live in Germany because his father deserted and came here. But he, David was talking about Russia and Hungary, and we see it more clearly elsewhere, but I think my friend Jens made it pretty clear that in 1933 Germany, as we all know, you know, the book burning and pushing out professors who teach an honest history or oppose government policies, what people took it for granted in the state and in the country and didn't think, just like we don't think, that anything bad can actually come of it. And within six months, Hitler had, of course, consolidated his power, and there was no turning back, and our panel, our discussion talks about how the US is in a similar place, but I want to relate that, David, to But I want to relate that, David, to, um, what Michael was just talking about, about the fear of, uh, speaking truth to power, of, of opposing, you know, not just candidates, but, you know, you, you get out there and, uh, write an editorial or you show up at a, at a legislative hearing. And, you know, you're going to be doxxed and, and called out. You're, uh, threatened with the Proud Boys and stuff. So I'll leave it at that. See what you have to say.
Hey, great. And Ellen, so David, we're going to go back to you and I think you have quite a, a longer time to address, uh, things. Ellen, what's on your mind? We need to unmute yourself, Ellen.
Sorry. Uh, mine is a, is a federal question. You know, with it looking like it may, it's a strong possibility that Jim Jordan is going to win in, uh, the House. I'm wondering what kind of ways that we can work to, yeah, are there any solution, any ideas about what can be done in case he tries to decertify the presidential election if it doesn't go his way?
Oh, on that note.
I know it's a horrible.
It is horrible, Ellen. On that note, David, over to you.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not an insider, but Jordan lost two votes.
Yes.
And I think that means he may be very, in a very bad position. Uh, because he, I think he needed to gain some votes to show someone that he was making progress and, and so we'll see. But, but I think that's a very good question, you know, I, I mean, my political analysis is if he is Speaker, that actually helps the Democrats take back the House. But your, your question is, well, what about, okay, wonderful if you're Democrat. But, okay, but what, what do we do if he starts denying the presidential election of, of a Democrat? And, um, obviously the electoral count add, oh, oh, the electoral act they passed hopefully helps. But I mean, I think that, that unlike the period before January sixth, where I think people did not take seriously that Trump would really try what he tried with cooperative House members. Yeah, I think that needs to be very well thought through. Uh, but I'm looking at the Jordan results and I will say, again, to be a little bit appraising across party lines. It's great that some of the House members voting against him are saying they're voting against him because he would not see, he was not willing to declare that Biden won. And I hope that continues to be said. Uh, because I think getting that out there is a reason to keep being leader. If America's hearing that, my hope is that's really helpful. So, but, but yeah, I mean, hopefully this can get there, but there, there, there need to be and hopefully the, the new reforms help us get there. The other two questions real quick, run for, um, there are groups, uh, to the question, I can't remember gentleman's name, but the question about running. There are groups that are starting that are actually quite robust and you may have met some of them called Run for Something that are working very hard. And others called Contest Every Race, that are working very hard to encourage and show people how to run, how to do it well, how to be a good candidate. And when I was a party chair, I did that through something called our Main Street Program. I was there to recruit and train people. But your question also gets to a different question, which is how do we recreate the sense that running itself is public service? I worry that Donald Trump and the crazy politics and the crazy time have started to encourage a whole lot of people to run for office that we don't think should run for office because they're not about service. And it's discouraging the people who, as you said, you both said, who we think would be good public office holders because they think it's public service, thinking I never want to do that. I don't want to destroy my reputation or be attacked by people who are in it for the wrong reason. So I think one thing we all have to do, and you all can help do that, is to start making sure that we tell the young people who, but think about a twenty-year-old right now. All they've seen is the worst of politics. They don't remember Barack Obama being president. All they remember is horrible stuff. All they've seen is horrible stuff. And I think those of us who remember when it could be better, need to, need to do everything in our power to not just train and recruit, but to actually say, no, no, politics actually was once and can be and should be about public service. And running itself in a tough race, that alone is public service because it brings transparency and accountability. And I think we have to, so we have to pair up with these efforts that are, that are helping people run a broader conversation that I try and do, that, that running itself and being in office. You know, it, let's, let's come back to a days where we look at the West Wing and think that's how politics should be, the show, the West Wing, and not the House of Cards, which is what I think a lot of people today think it should be. We need to re, we need to rebrand politics as again, as noble service. Um, and, and then the question about Germany. Yeah, I think a lot, you know, a lot more people are aware of the problem now than they were and I, I, I agree with that. And so some of the problem is many are still not aware of the true threat and we're not fighting it the right way at the State House level. But I do agree with you that another problem is a lack of, of courage to stand up. And this is one of the most, and all those quotes from the past about, you know, uh, silence ends up being as, as devastating to the cause as not seeing it at all, silence of your friends. And I, I think we have to get to a point where we really get impatient with people who know better, who are, let's say, in the Republican Party right now, who know that George is a threat, who know that Donald Trump's a disaster and either go along with it or won't say anything. And, and maybe even to, um, the point, uh, to Ellen's question, maybe the rejection of Jim Jordan as Speaker that happens becomes one of those moments. Because I do think to the other question, the danger now is that those who do know it, they just don't think it's going to happen to them. They think they're safe, but I'm telling you, in a lot of states, the old moderates are literally disappearing. They're putting themselves out of business because they're not speaking up against extremists. And they're agreeing to things like gerrymandering, which empower extremists. We have a more moderate governor in Ohio and he has agreed to every extremist map, which I look at, I think you're putting yourself out of business. Stop doing things that hurt your own cause, but they're all, for whatever reason, willing to, you know, trade their own standing. Because they don't have the courage to stand up to it. And I think we all have to do, and I try more and more of a job of, of being very direct that we see what they're doing and by going along with it, they're ultimately making it all worse and they're, and they're fueling it. I'll stop talking. I know we got other things to go to, but, um, good questions from all three of you.
Well, thank you so much, David. We're hoping that, um, you'll give us another insight into your thinking. And the plan is for you to talk for about twenty minutes, so roughly around two o'clock. If you can pause and we'll do some breakout sessions. It's over to you, though. I know you're planning another talk to us.
You want me to talk more?
I thought that was what was.
Yeah, I can. Oh, I, oh, but I, guys, we can be on till eight o'clock if you have me going.
I know. So let me tell you what, what I got from Amy.
I got it. I, I can talk. You want me to go for twenty, about fifteen more minutes and then we'll go to, um, the, the breakouts?
Yes, please.
Okay, here we go. So here's, here, you have heard the part of my talk that is depressing. Okay? Now I'm going to give you, and this is what my entire second book's about. What do we do about it? Because here's, here's the good news. It's not too late, everybody, and that's why you're working on democracy in this wonderful group. There are ways to overcome what we're talking about. We aren't at the point, we've heard, we're Germany, we're at a certain point, there's a point of no return. We're not at the point of no return. Uh, and not only am I saying this in theory, we're seeing it right now. We saw it the other day in Poland, by the way, with those elections. Uh, we are seeing that when people fight back with the right view of what's happening and they focus in the right places and the right ways, we are seeing the democracy side win. And again, when I wrote, wrote about laboratory hypocrisy, I wrote, hoping that's the case. The best news is we are seeing that play out as, as the case regularly. How do we fight back effectively? One, the most important thing. We need to acknowledge, and this is going to sound weird at first, but you'll see where I'm going, that the other side is actually correct. That we are in a battle for democracy itself. We are not in a magical moment of American history where a democracy is safe forever, where all we have to do is worry about a few federal offices. If democracy was safe, then sure, let's only focus on federal offices. But since it's not safe, we have to fight on how do we protect democracy itself? And once we see what the other side is doing, we should see the way we protect democracy itself is by engaging in the same places that they are where democracy is shaped, which is at the state level. So we are in battle for democracy itself. Once we see that, boy, do things become very clear, very quickly about how to do better. And what are we doing that's not working? That becomes very clear as well. I'll go through a few of these. There are many more in my book and I'm going to, I'm going to share my Substack link here for those who follow, want to follow, because I give stuff like this almost every day. One, it's a long battle for democracy. It's not about the next cycle. It's not about cycles at all. Do you think the suffragists only worried about elections every two years and then quit for a year and a half and then got, of course not. No one supported them. They needed to, they needed to fight in every single way. Well, we have to think the same way. John Lewis, you think he only focused on elections? No. It's a long battle for democracy. Sure, campaigns are a big part of it. But when we get ourselves into this every two-year frenzy and we, we kind of give it all for three months and then go away and think we're on a break and then we come back. That's, that is a losing strategy. Once you realize you're a battle for democracy. You think, uh, Steve Bannon stops recruiting election deniers in December after an election? Of course not. We have, when he's recruiting election liars, we need to be getting ourselves election supporters as poll workers. We need to be registering voters, uh, fighting for better voting laws, showing up at State House hearings, all of it. It's a long battle for democracy. Now, that may sound sort of sobering, like, boy, that sounds tiring. Um, that's the only way to win. And even better, I think you'll find it uplifting once you start to think about the right way, because once you see it's a long game, that means you can plan for a long game. That means you can measure results along a long arc. You can see progress even in tough years, like John Lewis would have seen, like suffragists would have seen. So to go back to that slide I had earlier, a, a long game plan in Oklahoma, or I'm sorry, in, let's say, Missouri here. They had fifty-six percent of their districts uncontested two years ago. Well, let's get that number down to thirty-five percent. And they may still be red in the year, but if they go from fifty-six to thirty-five, they're making progress uncontested. Or in Ohio, where we have so much purging. Every registered voter is, is, is progress in the long game, every net registered voter. Um, in New York State, what's the long game? Well, uh, not to offend anyone in New York State, if you're there, your turnout was much too low in twenty-two. Your voting rules are terrible. That helped George Santos win an election he should never win. So New York's long game is fix those rules. Lobby, register, get to work. There's a long game for everyone. And when you start seeing it that way, you can see that there's progress to be made all the time that we are not making when we only view it as about every two-year federal elections. Who's my best example of the long game? Stacey Abrams. She had a plan for Georgia for twenty years. She didn't quit when they didn't win some US Senate race that no one probably even thought they could win. She fought as a State House Minority Leader. She fought by starting nonprofits that took on voting rights issues. She registered voters. She ran for governor and registered even more voters. She had a, I mean, I, I knew Stacy because I went to law school with her. She ran around for twenty years saying, we're going to fix Georgia and she never stopped. And that's why Georgia turned blue in two thousand twenty. She had a long game. And through thick and thin, even when she lost her race in, in eighteen, she told the group of people gathered in front of her, I didn't win. It was a tainted election. I didn't win. But my goodness, we made progress. Because she was so close to winning. Well, who was right? She was. So everything is about a long game and everything you do should be about building towards that long game, which means you stick with it. And you don't quit every time you're red, well, you wish you were blue. But you also don't, don't, if you registered fewer voters or let's say you're New York State and you, let's say you were blue for Joe Biden, but your turnout was lower. You're not winning the long game and it may cost us all real quick. So everything has to be thought of as a long game. And number two, this will be right around the twenty minutes that Teresa gave you. Boy, once you see it's about our democracy, you better be fighting in all fifty states. The idea that dozens of states are left to be downward spiral extremist, you know, pardon my French hellholes, where there's no accountability, no real elections, in some states, no rule of law left, like Ohio. And we allow that to be the case because we're like, well, that's, we're not going to win a US Senate race there, so we shouldn't pay attention. It's terrible. It's wrong. It's self-defeating. And it means that, that we're allowing these things to happen. My view is every American has a right to have, has a right to vote and a free and fair election. And every American has a right to live in a functioning democracy at the state level. And the idea that we are allowing millions not to be in functioning democracies because we're not, you know, we selfishly think, well, they can't win us a US Senate race for our federal purposes is simply, at some point, deeply un-American. So we had to start fighting for democracy in all fifty states again. Think about the civil rights struggles, uh, in the fifties. Those weren't swing states, but they were Americans and they were states in our country. So we care enough, I hope, to, to care that, that Mississippi and Alabama let blacks vote again, or again, because they used to vote a hundred years ago. That's got to be our attitude now and not simply dismissing dozens of states because they don't help us win federal elections, which is kind of what the mindset is. Um, but there's also some benefit that comes with that. You go back to that slide about lack of accountability. When, when we basically allow, it's like, I, I use a soccer analogy. What we are allowing these state houses to basically be the frontline of their attack, and we don't even interfere with the shots, folks. They're, they're shooting again and again and again. We don't even run against them. We don't even interrupt what they're doing. Of course, we're going to lose. It's like a soccer game where one team's always on offense and the other team doesn't even play defense. We have to get into these states and start blocking the shots. We got to start running. We got to start being on message, getting people to show up to vote. A lot of the turnouts in these states are the lowest in the country because we're not giving people reasons to show up and we don't run. And what happens, uh, what do we do right now? I'll go back to this one real quick. Right now, Mississippi here, that's the Dobbs shot. You see MS, Tennessee, those are the ones who kicked out the two Justins, Ohio, Wisconsin. When they score their goal on this diagram, let's say the Mississippi scored on Dobbs. What do we typically do as a response, those of us who care about democracy? Generally, what we've been doing is saying, okay, now that they scored, we need another US Senator or two to stop them. That's what happened after Dobbs. We immediately pivoted to having it be a national Senate matter. That's like looking at this field and declaring that if only the team on the defense here had a better goalie, they'd win the game. No, they're not going to win the game. I don't care how good the goalie is. If the one side is taking shots with no opposition again and again, you're going to lose. And so what do we do? We go to fifty states. We start challenging the shots. After Mississippi and Dobbs, we don't just say we want another US Senator from, from Ohio. We say, well, who the heck shot that ball in Mississippi and who's going to run against him to hold them accountable? You know, by the way, it's so bad that the, the abortion ban authors in Mississippi, Ohio and Texas, didn't, none of them faced an opponent the next election after they did that? Of course, they're going to keep doing it. So we have to go to fifty states. We got to hold people accountable there. You're not going to win all, all those states. Of course not. But you're going to start bringing accountability back to places that haven't had any. And when places don't have accountability, they become downward spirals of extremism. And just, you look at this map. Iowa, Obama won Iowa. Obama won Indiana. Clinton won Missouri. Right now, those states are going through these downward spirals of extremism and not long ago, they were actually modern enough to be voting for those Democrats. When you don't challenge these places, you allow places whose instincts may be quite moderate to become extreme. Because the only people in the conversation are extremists and there's no one holding them accountable. So you got to go in all these places. Number three. Number three. We have to do the same thing within states. I, I won't go through all the details, but when we don't run in all these state houses and we allow half the districts to be uncontested, everything that goes wrong when you don't run in certain states goes wrong within states. What happens? Turnout's lower because you're not running in half the places. You're not knocking on doors. You don't have a message. There's no accountability for extremists. They pass the craziest laws. They don't even have to face a reelection. They're going to get worse. So the accountability has gone, and by the way, you'd win some of these races if you ran. Look at what happened in Kansas last August. The, the people of Kansas said to their State House, you're far more extreme than we are. We're rejecting your bill. Well, if you don't run against these people, you'd never give them a chance to actually do that in the State House level. So we have to start running all across these states and not simply, um, not simply in only swing districts, which is kind of what we do now. Number four, this is much bigger than Donald Trump. We make a big mistake when we think it's only about Donald Trump because it, it really allows, it's like having a view that, that, you know, the other side's fighting the same battle. This all started before Trump ever ran for anything, folks. This began after Obama won as part of the long history of our country, that there's a backlash whenever there's a diverse democracy emerging in our country. The same instinct that led to Jim Crow led to what we're talking about here. I hate to say it. It's just a fact. I hate to say it, it's just a fact. It's, it's the pattern of our history. So when we make it about Donald Trump, we almost are simplifying that reality, that bleak reality. That Donald Trump came along when this was already beginning. He made, he made it worse. He brought the worst out of some people. But if he were locked up tomorrow, which used to be a hypothetical, that it's no longer hypothetical anymore if he keeps ignoring these court orders to not, you know, say bad things about people. If he were locked up tomorrow, do you think they'd stop gerrymandering? Would they stop trying to censor history? Would they stop attacking democracy, depriving water from Georgia polls or phony audits there? Of course not. They're doing it anyway. And so when we make it about Donald Trump, what happens? We give cover to a lot of the activity as if, well, you know, that person's polite. They're not like Donald Trump. Well, they're doing the same things he would do or worse. In Ohio, we have a secretary of state who's done so much damage to democracy, but he doesn't feel like Donald Trump. So when we say it's only about Trump, we actually give him some cover. It's a, it's an assist. 2020, we, we told people, oh, it's never Trump. So a lot of people voted for Joe Biden, then he voted down the ticket for a lot of people who were attacking democracy. And they got reelected. And then they kept attacking democracy. We have to make it clear, this is about democracy or, or not. And if you're not on the democracy team, we don't want you in office and we're gonna work to beat you. And by the way, not only does that help us pinpoint who the real problem is, which is anyone who's against democracy. And this is the good news for, for groups that might want to build alliances across party lines. Once you see it that way, you also see that there are alliances to build. Because there are Republicans, and this sounds, some might think this is naive. This was a theory for my first book, but it's being proven out. There are Republicans who support democracy over their party. Now, some of you are probably thinking, where? Where's that happening? We would not have won issue one in Ohio in August if they did not exist. We would not have won issue one in Ohio if some had not spoken up. Now, often the ones speaking up are the ones not in power because, and that liberates them to speak up. But I'm telling you, when John Kasich, Betty Montgomery, the former attorney general, Bob Taft, the biggest Republican name in Ohio, former secretary of state and governor, when the former chief justice of Ohio, or a lifelong Republican, one of the most successful women in Ohio history, when they all come out and say, we're Republicans, but we think this issue one is attacking democracy vote? No, it matters. And that's what I'm saying. That effort shows that having any effort that we can build across party lines, libertarians came out against that, that effort to undermine democracy too. And guess what? Because all of us said it together and because we, we sort of forgot our differences for a few months to fight for democracy, we throttled that thing. In Republican counties that normally Republicans win 70-30, voted against issue one and defeated it because it was multi-partisan. Just as some counties that we normally lose 75-25, were 50-50. They didn't quite vote no, but boy, were they close. And that tells you that a lot of Republicans, last August, their party said vote yes on that terrible attack on democracy. I assume you all know the issue I'm talking about, the, the one that was gonna change it to 60%. A lot of Republican voters, at one point in plurality of polling, I think it went down a little bit, but, but a lot of Republicans, their party said vote yes, their governor said vote yes, their state rep said vote yes, lieutenant governor said vote yes, their senator said vote yes. They voted no. They voted no. Heroic. Save the state because they did that. So they're out there. And if we define the terms and the, and the teams correctly, we can, we need to work with them, especially in states like Ohio that require that type of broader partisanship, uh, non, if we're gonna win things. So that's the good news. It's not only a theory, it actually happened. And lastly, and you all do this, and this is why I love that you're embracing the democracy goal. Once you realize you're in a battle for democracy itself, gosh, I hope you realize that, and that it's based in states. My hope is people see and realize, like you and this group, there is so much we can all do about it beyond what we thought. One, the stakes are so big, we better feel that way. But two, once we realize we're not in some federal-state struggle, federal swing state battle, we're in a battle for democracy itself that is in every part of this country. Again, in Oklahoma, it's happening that too many people are uncontested. In New York, the voting rules aren't good. In Ohio, too many people have been purged. I don't care if you're a swing state or not, all those states have work to do. And so everyone, everywhere in this country has work to do, not just to help other states, which we need to do as well, but in their own states, democracy is something they need to fight for. And I go through this in the book. Once you see it in the way I'm describing, it's, it's nonpartisan as well. It also means there's so much more you can do beyond your partisan work. If you're on the board of a homeless shelter, get registering all the people, show up. If you're on the board of a food bank, get, get, get to work registering them as well. If you run a restaurant, McDonald's in Ohio, when Sheriff Brown was secretary of state, had a voter registration form on every tray, well, do that at any restaurant you're in. Help your customers, make sure they're registered. If you're the mayor of any city in America, knowing that your voters are being purged by these state houses, register everyone who walks through your rec centers, your health clinics, your libraries. There are so many things that we could use to lift democracy that we're just not doing because we aren't seeing the battle for what it is. And I'll just close with this and then, and then go to the breakout sessions. Why do I say this all with some optimism? Because everything I'm saying about using the state level political sort of process to fight for democracy, focusing there, and everything I'm saying about their extremism is, is not popular. In the last year, those two things have come together to build a winning streak for democracy that we are in the middle of as we speak. Think about it. Last August, Kansas, 60-40 victory against the gerrymandered state house for a woman's right to choose. Last November, election deniers running for secretary of state in virtually every swing state in the country. They lost in every swing state in a year that we're not supposed to win if you're a Democrat because we have the White House, but the Republican election liars lost in all those states. The Michigan and the, um, the Michigan and the Pennsylvania state houses flipped in November of last year. First time in 50 years, you've had that countercyclical win when that same party has the White House because people were focused. Then you have the Wisconsin Supreme Court race in, in April. Flipped the Supreme Court of Wisconsin when that's not supposed to happen because people all around the country said, oh, that's a battle for democracy, Wisconsin. We don't even know the two justices, but we know what's at stake, so we're gonna help. And it flipped. And then in Ohio, issue one in August, all of you, many of you, I'm sure helped. We, we win that one 60-40 in a state that was very red last November. There's a winning streak going. Why? Because their extremism is too much for most Americans. Americans, a majority, support democracy. And people are starting to focus on the state-level battle for democracy that we're in and they see that they gotta focus on that as much as a US Senate race. And when those things have come together in the last year, it is a unbroken winning streak for democracy. It is, it's even played out in special elections in certain states in recent months. So my, my, my caution is, don't let a presidential election blind us to the reason that's happening. If all we do is shift to only focus on Biden and Trump and we don't recruit for all these districts and we don't run the state house level, then we're not, we're gonna blow the very reason we have a winning streak. So what's the charge? The charge is, keep focused on elections through November for Virginia state house, New Jersey state house, state Supreme Court race in Pennsylvania, huge impact. School board races everywhere. Do you want book banners on school boards? I don't. I'm a father, I don't, I def, a six and nine-year-old. I don't want the angry neighbor telling our kids what they can learn. That, that's not the way we're supposed to work. So focus on those democracy battles in the coming month. Don't only focus on the Jim Jordan battle. And then roll right into '24. Recruit to make sure we're running everywhere. And by November of '24, again, in as bipartisan way as possible, find the extremists who are against democracy, not just at the presidential level, the US senate level, but all the way down your ballot. And get rid of them, just like we did last November with those election liars. We do that, yeah. County, as Robert just wrote, city councils, boards of supervisors. Pennsylvania in three weeks will be electing the people that will supervise elections next year. Don't lose sight of those kinds of offices, just like school board races. So you focus on the democracy battle the right way. Do not get thrown off by only worrying about federal. And next November, and this November, we can win not just the federal seats we've always prioritized, but we can build a much bigger winning streak for democracy itself that we have to have if we're gonna protect it. So with that, I will stop talking. I think that was about 20 minutes. Happy to, to take up anything after the working groups that you bring my way.
Ah, well, thank you, David. You got my adrenaline flowing. So what we're gonna do now is break into, into small groups and, well, we'll be breaking in groups of four. And the question that we want you to address in this, it'll be 10 minutes, is, you know, what did you find is surprising or interesting in what you just heard from, from David? How does his political facts stir you? How does this stir you? So we'll break into groups of four and, and come back in 10 minutes and then we'll hear from you. And make sure that everyone gets a chance to say something, you know, take two minutes each and then have somebody ready to go to tell us all what you talked about in your group. So go ahead and break us up, Crystal. Everyone.
I just wanna ditto your comment about it's the long game. That's the key thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let's hear from some of the groups here. Could you use the, your hand, raise your hand again electronically, under reactions, the button at the bottom? And we'll, we'll, I'll call on who I see here. And just say, what, what, what did you talk about in your group? And, and what would you like to direct to David to comment on? And we'll start with Terry and then Todd and then John, John Daggett. So Terry, you're up first. And you're muted.
I was in group five. And we started out saying, not a lot of what you said surprised us, but it reminded us of what we need to do. And several of us mentioned the long game again and that it really takes a commitment and we can't just think of 2024. We talked about some states, like a couple of us from California and felt our state was, was safe. But when you really look at it, even though it's highly democratic, there's some Democrats that support the fossil fuel industry, which is strong in California. So we really have to pay attention to the people that run and the issues that they're running on. And the other thing is, David, you inspired us. Inspired us to get into action and to be involved at the local level and the state level and to really pay attention of who's running on all issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
Todd?
Yeah, I don't know what our group number was. I didn't see that. I apologize. The one thing we spoke about is the, the omnipresent sense of getting up in the morning and putting our slippers on and their slippers of absolute emergency. We've been living that now for years. And to hear David speak of the long view is we, the, the rustling of, okay, I woke up with a sense of urgency, but I have to think long view and how do I make that stretch and integrate it during my day? And then I would say the other thing, Sarah spent parts of her life doing activism that included, I believe Sarah said, some jail time and stuff, is that she recognizes she has to get up in the morning and do self-care first before she jumps into either the urgency or the long term or both. But to pay attention to self-care, to prep yourself for the day. I hope I didn't miss anything. I think we're all just feeling a little bit crazy right now. That's my opinion.
Okay. Let's, we're running behind, so we're gonna ask each one of you to make your comments short. And I'm gonna go to John and, John Daggett, and then Roger, then Penny, then Robert. So John, you're next.
Okay, I'll just go right to the question. We had a lively discussion and everybody wanted to get some insight from you, David, on how to have a balanced dialogue because conservatism is valuable in tempering too much progress and too much conservatism is bad for progress. It's that dialogue. How do you, how can we help a Republican or other folks that, that maybe disagree with us be factual and reasonable?
Okay, I think I'm supposed to keep hearing and then I'll respond.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, Rod and then Roger, Roger first, then Rod. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So we had folks from Massachusetts, California and Florida. And there, folks were aware that the states are really a problem. And in particular, our member from Florida was able to give us a litany of what's going on at the local state and every level in Florida and, and the, the struggle there. And, and her question is, what, what is gonna be most effective that she can do? From Massachusetts, we're in pretty good shape, but transparency is a big problem. And I, I think we also talked about the long term being a critical thing. If Trump is defeated, hopefully he will be, we still have to carry on.
Very good. Rod, you're muted, you can go.
Thank you, John, and thank you, David. David, our group was very grateful and we learned several things. Probably the most important thing was the reminder of ticking action locally. And Jeffrey in our group has been attending local school board meetings in Northern California, which is very important. And Linda, as you all probably know, she has been a huge climate action activist. And Amy has sent over 3,000 letters. So it's, it was a pretty amazing group of four, but we all really are grateful for what you shared, David.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, Robert and then Penny.
You know, if you listen carefully, you'll see the difference between me and Terry when it comes to our impression. A lot of David, which a lot of what you said was all about hard work, getting out to meet people. And that came up in our group. A lot of this takes meeting with your friends, getting a, you know, a registration list, all the sorts of things. Sometimes just plain hard, mundane work. And thank you for reminding us that.
Penny?
We were lucky enough, our group of three was lucky enough to be with David. So we got to ask questions and make comments. And one of the, one of the big questions was, how do we as a group of elders, and often many of us who don't have the time, the strength, the focus, nor the ability to get out and run for office, how do we still remain in the game and be positive influencers for democracy? And so the things that came up were, show up, build alliances, get close to the front lines and be influencers. Focus on and bring in youth to this effort of building democracy. Help young people feel some ownership. And that was another one of the, the biggest points was that if we can help young people feel ownership in this process of democracy, then we will have won a great deal. And it's not just by, by involving them in conversation or getting them to vote, but by involving them in and helping them be a part of the accountability. Bringing them in, to them. And, oh, and using the organizations that we're in to do that. So that voter registration, for example, becomes a part of a university's registration. It's also voter registration. Or in Elders for Sound Democracy, for example, or EAN, we include young people in our conversations. We find ways to do that.
Penny, well, would you put all, all those good points in the chat? So we'll make sure that everybody gets them.
I will do my best.
When we're, we're done here. And David, we're running a little bit late here. So we're gonna give you the last word and then we'll be over to Amy. So any last comment?
Well, just thank you for the feedback. And, and one, one thing I, I hope, I think when I first wrote Laboratory of Autocracy, it was, it's not because of the book, but I think that I wrote it because I was so alarmed people didn't see the problem. And, and when you say to me, hey, a lot of this we already knew, I'm happy because I feel like there is a lot of awakening happening. It's one of the reasons we have the winning streak going is because people who used to only think, hey, well, there are five US senate seats to worry about, now see that that Wisconsin Supreme Court race was something to worry about, the issue one Ohio was something to worry about. They know that the Virginia state house races in three weeks are key. So I, I like that it may be a reminder, it may be a pep talk, but if it was all new information, I'd worry more than the fact that people are starting to catch on to it. So now my biggest concern is, like I said, people are seeing it. We're actually seeing it succeed. So let's keep evolving our strategies so that they're more and more successful on the scale they need to be. And then most importantly, do not allow the fact that we have a presidential race to make us drop everything else. I mean, we got to win that. I'm not just saying as a Democrat, I want Joe Biden to win it. I assume he's a candidate. But if if we let that do what it always does in the past, which is we drop everything else, we view it all as a zero sum game, we can't put time in anything else. Then we're really not, then then even though we've woken up a little bit, we haven't really learned the lesson. So my hope is we build on the new knowledge, we build on the new strategies, we build on the winning streak. So that we do a lot more to protect democracy. And as someone said, yeah, it's hard work. But my worry is we've been doing the hard work in this frenzied way and feeling like, oh, my God, the next election, if we don't win it, we lose everything. If we do the hard work along the long game where we pick up state house after state house, at some point, we're not living on the thin ice we've been living on. Where we feel like every election is the risk of the end. Well, if we start to have a more shored up democracy in multiple states, then you're not under, you're not fearing that any moment you don't win is the end, which is a terrible way for us to live individually. And a bet, and and a very unhealthy way to live as a country. If we get the roots built in of democracy more firmly in these states, then it, then it doesn't feel like everything's on on the line every single time, which as you all said, is is not healthy and and does require a whole lot of self care. Or we'll all drive ourselves nuts worrying about it all. So that long game perspective at the state house level, I think is is a better way to get get to the, get to the ends we need.
Okay, thank you. Over to you, Amy.
Okay, we're very grateful that David was able to be with us today. And we want to encourage you to read his books and to subscribe to his Substack at davidpepper.substack.com. Thank you again, David, not only for your time today and for the insights you provided, but also for inspiring each one of us to remember to keep everlastingly at it. Over to you, John.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all you're doing.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen now and um, uh, give you a little bit of um, let's see, we want to play from the beginning here. So uh, I'm going to go through these really quickly. Uh, we have some actions that you can take right away and uh, some involvement that you can get in. Uh, let me say this, that uh, these are actions that you or your friends or family can take. Uh, each slide that I'm going to show is got a brief explanation with links to either the organization that we're working with or a person that you can talk to about getting involved. And you will receive a copy of these afterwards, so you don't have to take notes. So the first one is, let's urge, and these are a couple of quick ones that everybody can do. Uh, urge our elected officials to act. And the first one has to do with move to amend. This is about the Citizens United decision that happened over a decade ago that says corporations have the same power as as people, same rights. And that money is just a free speech, so they can spend as much money as they want to influencing elections and and lobbying. Well, the the move to amend is to amend our constitution to turn that off to says uh, corporations are not people. They don't have the same rights and money is not free speech. So uh, that's one that you can do. The second one is Freedom Freedom to Vote Act. That's the John L. Lewis Act that was uh, uh, reframed as a freedom to vote. And uh, there's the uh, the link to that. This is the one that uh, takes on voter suppression. Uh, encourages everyone to vote. So please take a look at both of those. They're easy to do. You just get online, fill it in and you're uh, communicating with your your Senator and Representative in that way. The second one here is we want people to help in getting out the vote. This is uh, in line with what what David has just told us, we need to really work on this. First one is the Environmental Voter Project that we work with. The Environmental Voter Project is like, is an organization. They realize that and it's counterintuitive that environmentalists don't vote. And so uh, this is, uh, they've been identified and uh, the Environmental Voter Projects help us connect with those people. Asking them to make sure that they register to vote and then that they actually do vote. And uh, if you want to learn more about uh, that or what we're doing, uh, I've got Paul Dreyfus's uh, email on the right. You can call or get in touch with Paul and he can help you get involved with the the Environmental Voter Project. The next one is the High School Senior Voting Project that uh, we've just recently been involved in. And this is in line with the idea that we want to help young people vote. And it's a senior, high school seniors project where we go actually work with them and and the Civic Center is the organization that is running this thing. We we uh, work with them. And and the different states, we uh, are connected with the different high schools. We get in touch with whoever the guidance counselor or the teacher that works with students, maybe the civics teacher or the history teacher. And uh, eventually we get to a student who is uh, runs a campaign in the school uh, to get uh, the senior high uh, class all registered to vote. And so uh, if you want to hear more about that contact, you can look at the website, the Civic Center, or uh, get in touch with Torres Flaherty uh, at this email address on the right here. The last one uh, on this thing is, if you want to do something right away, uh, get uh, go to the website, Vote Forward and um, the link is there and it's actually writing postcards to uh, people that are voting. And there's a campaign right now uh, going on in Ohio. Another one going on in in Virginia. And each each month, there's new people or new new states that are involved in that. Um, third one, this is about working at the state and local level. You know, we are launching state teams now that we are uh, going to. Our intention is to have these ready by January uh, 2024. So we will work at the state and local level. And uh, throughout the next uh, year and beyond, the intention is to make these as chapters. So right now we're forming state teams. Uh, we got one running already in Arizona. The next three up are going to be Florida, Georgia and Wisconsin. Uh, by the way, you do not have to live in these states to work in those states. So if you have one that uh, you say, hey, I'm, I live in in uh, Minnesota, but I want to work in Wisconsin, you can do that. Um, and uh, after we get those four going, we're going to go for Michigan, Nevada, Pennsylvania and Texas. And uh, this is the the uh, the eight we have lined up at this point, or this is our intention. But uh, you know, if you have, say, I want to get something going in Ohio, say, let's uh, let us know and we'll, we'll work together. By the way, we're working hand in hand with Third Act on this. We're partners on this. And so they're a great partner for us to work with and 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 uh, they do a lot of the the initial work and then we bring in the the people power, if you will. So uh, let us know. And um, here's the the our uh, EAN website, our our Sound Democracy page has more of a description of what we're doing at the state level. And if you want to talk, uh, that's my email address. I'm glad to work with you on that and and tell you what what you need to know and how you can get involved. So uh, the last one is let's be informed. Uh, and uh, this is repeating of what Amy said earlier. Uh, subscribe to David's uh, Substack, Pepper Spective. And this is the email or the the website address for that. So with that, thank you. Yeah.
Can I suggest another one for being informed? Heather, Heather Cox Richardson, her Letters from an American is an incredible historical viewpoint.
Yes, it is.
What's going on now.
I totally agree with that. Uh, and uh, yeah, let's get that. Once you put the uh, uh, address for that in the email, uh, Nancy, and we'll make sure everybody gets that too. And uh, we're uh, seven minutes over here. So I wanted to thank everybody for being here. Uh, this has been a great uh, program for us, got it all stirred up. Next month, we're having uh, um, Bill McKibben be with us. And it's going to be a program about the the connection between sound democracy and climate action. And then so that'll be a conversation with him. So that will be a a super one. So make sure that'll be on November 15th. Same time uh, Wednesday, November 15th is this one. And you'll all be hearing about that. So uh, anybody, you're welcome to stay. Uh, if you would like to continue the chat here and we'll stay on for another 15 minutes. But again, thank you for being here with us today. Uh, we appreciate your support. I hope you have gotten fired up and it's, it's really good to see you. And and Penny, you got something to say. So yeah, the floor is yours.
I do. I my, I'm burning to say it. Save the chat. Just remember to save the chat.
Okay, good.
And and while she's saying that, in the chat, I I just posted another uh, way people might be uh, able to uh, get involved in action. The Elders for Social Justice, a confronting authoritarianism campaign uh, is uh, doing exactly the same kind of things that David has been talking about and everybody's been talking about here. We work uh, uh, very closely with ESD, Elders of Sound Democracy also. And uh, I put in the chat a background memo about the campaign and also ways to get involved in your local school board to uh, push back against extremist attacks on K-12 education. And we also have a book banning club and um, reading, reading banned books. So I, my information, contact information's in there if you have any questions. Great. Thanks so much, David and John and every, and Terrence and Carol and everybody. Amy. This was great.
Yeah.
Great program. Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. It was great.
All right.
Thank you. Much great program.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again for being here.
David, that was really inspiring and fun. Thank you.